This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, the time being 6:00 PM. I will call to order the Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, meeting of the Tilton Planning Board. First on our agenda is reorganization for Chair and Vice Chair. Is there? Do you do it Vice Chair first or Chair first?
Chair.
Chair, alright. Is there any nominations for Chair?
Any volunteers?
I'll do it again if anybody.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I make a motion to Secretary cast one ballot for the incumbent going to Chair and Vice Chair.
What was it again?
I make a motion that the Secretary.
Yeah.
Cast one ballot for the President Chairman and Vice Chairman.
Okay, I'm assuming you're the Secretary.
No, I'm not the Secretary.
Okay.
That's the form of motion?
That's what I said. I make a motion.
Is there a second?
Turn this way. Second, um, who's Vice Chair?
Me.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none.
Who seconded that?
Catherine.
Oh Catherine, okay.
So the, just want to make sure I understand, it was to... I'm not quite sure I understand the motion.
Keep the vote, keep, keep the Vice Chair, Chair and Vice Chair as, as sitting.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Abstentions, abstain, because I'm...
You're gonna abstain?
Yeah.
So...
Big three vote.
One, two. Robert, you're an aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's three ayes. One abstention.
One abstention, any opposed? Motion.
Oh, I'm only, I turn aye.
Okay, so it's four.
Sorry, I thought I heard it, but I... Bless her.
No one's ever accused me of being quiet.
Sorry, alright.
Okay.
Motion passes. First up, oh wait, I'm just gonna jump ahead on our agenda. Our third case of the evening, 115 Clark Road, Brian Wuchik.
Yep, Wuchik, yeah.
We need to make a motion to move that to May 13th. DES is backlog, no pun intended, or all puns intended. And therefore they're not able to get all their information that they need from DES in time for this meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so we're gonna move that to May 13th. Alright, going back to the top of our agenda. First up, Gate City Development Partners LLC. Map R07 Lot 9770, Laconia Road, Resort Commercial Planning Board Case Number 25-03. Change of use and site plan. And this is... Is it? Is it Dominic?
It is.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if it was Dominic or Domino, so... No offense, but, alright, so we have... The application here's... This is, what is this? Does everyone have the site plan application?
Everyone have this map?
I have. Was it in our packets?
Yes, it should be. We only had six of them.
Must have been lucky number seven.
We can share it here.
I'll share, unless it's underneath this.
It should be in there, Eric.
Thank you. And this is the... This is, oh, he's got it right back here. There it is, it's in your right hand.
The application looks to naturally complete me.
Motion is our second. I'll second it. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Mr. Dom, Mr. Dom Dominic, sorry. Welcome. And the floor is yours.
Well, what do you want to hear from me?
I guess a little refresher of, of the, of the proposed...
Okay, we're turning a three-bedroom residential property into a three office, or a three unit, not three unit, but three-room office. And that's all we're doing. Yep.
I have a question, I checked with the sewer department and she said that you were hooked up to the sewer. But I see a septic system.
I, I don't believe we're hooked to the sewer.
You're not?
No. No, there's a septic tank.
Available there?
Uh-huh.
Sewer is available there.
They, they've, they haven't come 100% sure to tell me that. I asked and they said they thought it was, but no one's, no one's come out and said.
Well, I checked and they told me that it was.
Oh, great, great.
And she's one of the commissioners, so.
Oh, great, I would love to have sewer. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
What's the square footage of your office proposal?
It's approximately 1,100 square feet, because we're removing the addition on the right-hand side.
What's, what's it finished, what is it gonna be, 1,100?
Yes.
So, three, three tenants it'll, for 1,100?
Not three tenants, three, three.
Three offices?
For my company, right.
Oh, I see, okay. So your company's gonna have three offices in this building?
Yeah, right.
1,100 square feet?
Right.
One business.
One business.
One business, thank you, thank you.
You decide what that business is yet?
It's Lakes Region Modular and Gate City Development.
Okay, so...
Yeah. I think the question last time was, what were we gonna do with the rest of the property? And we don't have any plans for the rest of the property.
It's the, I think it was yesterday, or Monday, one day that, not today, no, today's Tuesday. So it had to be yesterday, I had an appointment in Belmont in the morning, so I drove by, there's like a trench.
Yeah, Eversource is making everybody hook to the main line out front now.
Oh, so you're doing it underground?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm familiar with that process.
Yeah, I think that they might be taking everybody off that line that goes behind everybody.
Yeah. Storms. They don't like, the people don't like the electric company in their property, and they have a storm, you can't get there fast enough.
Right, they're the first ones to complain.
Yep. So I see snow storage. What's the little star?
Do you, do you have a driveway permit so far from the state?
We have two driveway permits, correct?
Two?
Two, yep.
But one has expired, right?
None of them are expired, and none of them will, according to the state.
I thought the logging one.
No, Mr. Kimball with the state, I called him on last Friday, and he says that they don't expire. He says they expire if you don't have them set up. But he said that those are all set, and if you guys had any questions, he'd be willing to talk to you.
Yes, sir, Rob.
Right.
I do have a question, though, on the print, it says existing gravel driveway. On the driveway permit, two driveways. One is gravel, one is paved.
Did she write gravel driveway on the main?
Driveway is an existing paved driveway.
I think what she meant to write was that she was gonna do gravel extensions.
That's the one to the business office.
Yep.
And the other one is, uh, yeah.
Yeah, the original driveway is paved from when it was, or as residential, but I think what she's saying is, is the extensions to make any extra parking would be gravel.
So are you gonna keep it gravel?
Currently.
Okay.
Yep.
So we don't have to worry about drainage and...
Right.
But they'll require you to make an apron to connect to Route 3, correct?
Oh, that one is already paved. So...
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, he said, you know, the guy at the state said it's all set, that we don't have to touch anything.
Well, my confusion is, is that on your permit, the one for the business office does say paved driveway.
I think it's a typo on, on the map.
And that's, yeah, so I'm trying to find out, it must be a typo on the permit. They must have mixed them up.
This permit authorizes a paved access to be used?
The driveway one?
This permit authorizes paved access.
To modular home business sales office drive.
Well, he's got two different ones on there, one's paved and one's gravel.
Right, but the business office one, according to DOT, is existing paved. Driveway two is existing gravel.
Correct, so, so what I said was, is the one that she has on this print, she, when she wrote this, existing gravel driveway, she meant the, the aprons that we're gonna put there if we need it for parking.
Okay, so now I'm back to, is the parking area gonna be gravel?
Most of it is, because she's gonna add that to get the parking that you guys require. There's an existing paved driveway from the home that's there, and she was just gonna add some aprons on to the edge of it.
Okay.
I think your, in the cap space, space one, two, and three are what will be gravel, and the remaining is paved. If I'm, again, I have it fresh in my memory, because I drove by it yesterday, so... So there'll be no modular homes parked on this property?
That's not what we're looking for right now, for sure, just looking for the office.
Just the two lighting fixtures on the building?
That's all that's on the building, yep.
What kind of signage?
Say that again?
What kind of signage?
We haven't proposed any signage yet, because we wanna do something with the trees out front at some point. And I think that the sign's gonna be great, if I put a sign up now, it's blocked by these trees. I'm really worried about some of the bigger trees that are falling, so... I wanna get that stuff situated for us. We do most of our stuff off the internet, so we don't have a hard time with advertisement.
I don't know how to, I don't know how to say this, but do you expect clients to be coming and going throughout the day, throughout the week, throughout the month?
Typically, we have probably one or two clients a day that stop in.
That's satisfactory, okay, thank you. My other question is, you primarily deal with businesses, or you deal retail?
Retail.
Okay.
Your hardware zoning requires downcast lighting?
Yes, we made sure that they were downcast.
And when you do put signage up, we do have regulations for signs as well.
Right, that's, that's one of the reasons that we're holding off, we wanna make sure that we have the right stuff.
Must have driven by that site 100 times in the past month. Did you maintain a vegetative barrier on your two boundaries, where you have other, the condominiums and the hotel on one side?
We, we left certain trees, but then the condo association went in and took a bunch of trees down, so half of it that we left is gone, so... They, they wanted some trees, because they're worried about them hitting their condo, so they come in and take.
On their property?
Well, they took them from ours as well, which was, we, we allowed it, because it was a hazard. So they didn't, they didn't wanna hit some high wood.
Require you to, you're the property owner to maintain a privacy barrier. So...
Well, I think it was a mutual.
Let some shrub grow up?
Yep, I think there was a mutual agreement between them, they didn't want anything there to hit their house. And there's definitely one, a barrier on the left side.
Good, thank you.
You plan to have any kind of landscaping around the building?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, once we, once we get approved and everything, we're gonna put the lawn in and all that stuff, make everything nice and pretty. We took a lot of trash off that property, I don't know if you guys knew that property before.
Yeah, we drive, that's a main route to drive.
Yeah, there was no less than 100 tractors out there, and tires, and trash buried, which we dug up and took out of there.
Refresh my memory, where exactly is this piece of property?
You know, just go past the, I, I call it the preserve, it's not the preserve now, go past the preserve, about 150, 200 feet down on the left where the trees have been removed.
Okay. So you've been logging that previously, correct?
We did last year, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, okay, so are you gonna remove that home that's there, or are you gonna keep that home?
That home is staying, we're reciting it.
Okay, you're gonna, that's what you're gonna develop?
That's, that's what we're.
That's what you're gonna develop right there, okay.
Yep.
Any plans to be, to develop the rest of the property at all?
Not at the current time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I couldn't think of the word.
Have you read our light, lighting ordinance?
I have.
Okay, good, I, I forget how it's, um, pretty descriptive, let's just say.
Right.
150 incandescent bulb.
If you get approval for this, what will your hours of operation be?
Typically from about 7:30 in the morning till about 6:00 at night.
How many days per week?
Monday through Friday on those hours, and possibly Saturday might be till noon.
And forgive my ignorance again, but what type of business is this?
We sell modular homes to people, similar to what Camelot does.
But are you gonna store any on the site?
Not currently, no, if we do, we would have to come back to you guys and draw.
Alright, we're gonna open it up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who wish to speak on this case? Do we have anyone online? I wasn't sure if it was hidden, because it says there's three people online, so is there anyone online that wishes to speak on this case? Anyone physically here wish to speak on this case? Yes, sir, in the back, if you could, speak into the microphone, identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Ray Bully, I own the property next door to Jim's, Winners Plum Country Gift Shop. And, and my question to Jim actually is...
You asked your question to the board, sir, and then, yeah, sorry.
After the clearing that, that was done, all the logging, I have some trees that are right on the lot line, I've got one tree that's leaning on my power line going to the gift shop building. And I have another tree further up that's uprooted, and ready, getting ready to fall on my property now. And there's very little buffer there, I was wondering if, if that could be removed by Jim's company.
You have my phone number, you should easily call me, I would wanna make care of it.
Okay.
If it's leaning against the power line, if you...
I have, I have one small tree that's on the power line right now.
If you call, I believe Eversource is your power company here?
I haven't, but usually in the past, it's on my property, not on my property, but his property, they won't touch it, because it's, it's not their responsibility.
Well, we can't touch anything that hits the power line.
If, if it's touching the power line, it's within the 15-foot right-of-way that they have, so they may, they may not cut it down, but they may cut it back, trim it back. Literally, if you take a 15 feet, shunk, they're gonna come in and clear it with it.
His line from their line.
Well, it's usually...
So Eversource is responsible for it?
They should be, but I mean, if he's willing to, I mean, because if you hire a...
I won't touch it if it's on the power line.
Right, most tree companies won't touch it.
Alright, I'll get a, I'll get a hold of Eversource.
I only, I work in that industry, so I know. I think I know, but I don't. Alright, and...
There needs to be more of a buffer on the west side, is that what I just heard? Camouflage, vegetative, they can't see you, you can't see them buffer?
I think it's, the trees are...
Yeah, he's, he's about, he's about 25 feet higher than us.
Didn't leave a buffer.
Did you say he didn't leave a buffer, or is it just that now that he's cleared out some of the trees, there's...
There might be a 10-foot buffer, but there's very, very few trees.
The other question I had is, I heard him mention something about the power lines, or the lines that, there's a, an easement that runs through my property and through Jim's property. And nobody's contacted me about removing those lines, or all, all, you know, doing any kind of removal, or burying, or...
They, they will soon.
Rerouting?
You have a problem, they'll ask you to move it out front.
So they're gonna remove those lines?
What I was told was, is that they're not sure if they're gonna remove the lines.
You just make sure you're speaking to the microphone, sorry.
They're not sure if they're gonna remove the lines, but they're taking the power out, because this runs on the main road now. So there's, there's other lines on those poles besides them.
Do you have a formal notification for that?
Formal notification, I can call them and ask.
No, I just wonder if you received anything?
No, I called them to ask them about the power lines.
Oh, okay.
They told me that, that they'd rather have me move it out front, because they're gonna make everybody move it out front.
I see.
That's a, that's a power company.
Right.
That's not, within our purview, so...
Hmm, okay, thank you.
I'll close it to the public. At 6:28.
I'll make a motion to accept it with the power on conditions.
I hope you can read my handwriting.
I can read Eric's writing, that the signage meet the specifications of our zoning ordinances, and that there be a vegetation on the border. On the, on the one side in particular, I believe, the side that you're talking about.
West side?
Yeah, and any future change or use of the property, where the lawns are cut, that you come back to the planning board to get permission.
Second.
Of the motion, right? Yeah.
Signage?
Can you repeat that again?
Mm-hmm.
Signage?
All right, write straight down again.
Yeah, signage?
Keep going.
Plant vegetation along the border?
Mm-hmm.
Any future use of the property? Requires a return to the planning board? Or acceptance? Okay, Catherine seconded it.
Catherine seconded it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Oh, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'll make sure that Johanna is aware of the source.
It's thirty P M.
Oh.
All right, moving right along. All right, now, now.
Twenty years, I know how to do it.
All right. Next up on our agenda. Clark Case Nickerson, two thousand and six trust. Map R twenty lots one dash two through lot, uh, let me try that again. Map R twenty lots one dash two through one dash five and lot eleven in the industrial district. Planning board case twenty-five dash oh-two, Business Park Drive. S P A Properties. Lot merger. It's just a lot merger.
It's a lot merger. Why do we have all this?
It's a site plan.
Thank you.
Okay, it says like, it says lot merger there, but.
I think that was an error.
Okay.
Subdivision slash site plan improvement.
Yeah.
All right, does everyone get the?
Application says, says site plan.
All right. Let's take a look.
Sure.
Gotcha.
I just came across the authorization. The property owner.
Where'd you see that?
The applicant's in the pocket. It's an electronic signature. There's no witness and it's not notarized.
It's way in the back, Chairman.
It's in the back?
Yeah.
It's out right, mine was right after the list of, um.
A butters.
A butter.
Oh, there we go. If you keep flipping the. So there's our second page of the document. Yeah. It's supposed to have.
This is a mess.
Does.
I'm not, what I have here doesn't show a need for witnesses. And it says, it's a Clark Case Nickerson, twenty oh, oh-six trust, the landowner. And the landowner is Casey Nickerson, I believe.
Well, it says Clark Case.
This is Clark. I believe that's Casey's son. Isn't it?
No.
Was that Casey?
It says.
He's, uh, owner of record on the tax card.
Clark Case Nickerson is.
So.
That's Casey.
This document does, does not require it, but on the other hand. For site planning, somebody else's property that isn't present. I'd like a little bit more than electronic signature.
Electronic signature is perfectly legal today. Yes, it is.
I, I'm not saying it isn't, I'm just, I'm just saying for.
If it, if it pleases, yeah, if it pleases the board, I'd be happy to speak to that when the time's appropriate.
I just feel more comfortable if, uh, we had something a little more. I wouldn't wanna site plan somebody else's property without their knowledge. I suspect electronic signatures are easy enough to get with everything else that goes on in the internet.
I sign everything to the trustee and electronic signatures, so the bank accepts it. I don't see a problem with it.
I, it's the sa- it's the property owner.
He owns the property. I, I don't understand the confusion or the comments. But that's okay. You're gonna explain it to us.
Well, um, well, if we, we get to that point.
I'm sure we're not going to finish this site plan this evening. So I don't think it would be a detriment to get something a little more reassuring that Mr. Nickerson is okay with the site planning his property.
Is Mr. Nickerson here?
No.
I only, I don't know who he is visually, so.
I'm happy to discuss it when you're ready.
Seven, there's seven, there's seven of you sitting here, and any of you could be Mr. Nickerson, and I.
Neither he nor his attorney are here this evening.
Okay. Well, we're still looking at the application, so.
Understood.
So these lots have not been merged yet. Is that correct?
That's true.
As I look through the site plan. This, uh, proposed distribution facility covers two lots, three lots.
Four.
Four. It's three, it's like three on one side of the road and one on the other side.
Four.
Right, but I'm, I'm just looking at the three on this side, this building. There must be what, something else over there? But it covers three. My point is, we can't site plan this until the lots have merged, can we?
Yes, you can.
Contingent upon merge, merge, yes, you can.
I'm also happy to speak to that when the time is appropriate.
Like running after the horse with the cart.
I assure you, I can explain it all if you give me a chance.
And there's the four.
Four lots, right?
Four and one.
Four and one, right? Okay.
Correct.
I don't see snow storage. It's not noted, but maybe there's a plan.
I don't really see where they could, personally.
So maybe they have a plan that they'll let us know about. Yeah, okay. Thank you, Pat. Appears to be. There are motion. Have you ever had a chance to review the application?
I'm moved.
There's a motion. I'll second the motion. Any discussion on accepting the application to be substantially complete?
Um, I don't see a lighting plan. I believe that's required in our application, is it not? On the, um, index, this thing crossed out.
Planting plan, overall planting.
L L one hundred.
What is it?
L L one hundred through one oh-two.
You got a copy of the dredger?
I have C G one hundred, C G one oh-one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I would caution you all not to be looking at the dredge and fill plans that you got five minutes prior to the meeting. Look at the plans that came with the application.
This is application for site plan approval. Do you want us to look at the ones we need a magnifying glass to look at?
Uh, no, Catherine, uh, you should have a set. Same size.
I do see a L L one hundred and L L one oh-one in the smaller package. I don't see it in the bigger pack, in the bigger pages.
This is what I have. Oops, thank you.
I can't read this.
Anybody find them?
It's in, it's in, um.
Oh, one hundred. So there should be four pages.
It's, if you go from the back, the back, one hundred is on the back of one page and L L one oh-one is on the other. There's a overall site lighting plan. Site lighting plan one. And site lighting two and site light, wow, site lighting.
L L one oh-one?
Yeah, yeah. There's one hundred, one oh-one. One oh-two and L L five oh-one.
I can't read it.
It's not in this big copy. It's in the whole, it's in the little copy.
It's not in this one.
Yes.
This is.
Yes. Thank you. That's my cue to speak into my microphone.
We also dropped full-size plans when we filed the application, so they must be in the building someplace if you needed something larger to review.
There is a, there is a lighting plan. But I have a feeling that this is not gonna be done in one meeting.
No.
But.
And I'm thinking, I'm thinking that this is something we need to get Keach in North.
Well, we can't just, I'm just saying for, just for accepting the application.
Yes, I agree with you.
Okay. We can get into the minutia.
Get through the.
Any other discussion on accepting the application as substantially complete? No, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. If you could, um. tell us your name, sir, introduce yourself to the board.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
And we can start this process.
Yes, thanks for having us in this evening. My name's Ari Pollak. I'm an attorney at the Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell Law Firm in Concord. I'm here tonight for your applicant Scannell Properties. With me this evening is Leo Leighton, employed by Scannell, as well as Dave Gagnon and Chris McLean of Langdon Engineering. They've been doing the civil and traffic engineering for the project. And then Brendan Quigley of GOV Environmental is our wetlands scientist and environmental scientist. We're the core members of the permitting team for this proposed new development project that's looking to improve unimproved lots on Business Park Drive off of Sanborn Road. And as the chair mentioned, it's specifically map R20, lots 1-2 through 1-5, so four lots on the southern side of the road and one lot 1-11 across the street on the north side of the road. The five sites are each owned by the Clark Case Nickerson 2006 Trust. You have a letter of authorization signed by Mr. Nickerson, who is the trustee of his trust in your file. And that was submitted to town staff to authorize the filing of this application as submitted in our presentation this evening. I know there was some concern about the letter that was received. I can tell you that Mr. Nickerson is represented by local attorney Stephen Nix. His office and my office communicated about the preparation of that letter of authorization. And he supplied his client's signature on that letter. And he also knows that we are supplying the site plan application, that we're presenting it this evening. And he has an exact copy of everything that has been filed with the town. And obviously, if there were concerns about his letter, we certainly could supplement in some other form or provide additional information if it was important to the board. This is the same letter that was supplied to the zoning board when we were there for zoning matters in this, right in this room. The combined site is about 10 acres on the south side of the road, a little over two acres on the north side of the road. The south lots are intended for development of a distribution facility. The facility will be staffed 24/7 and take advantage of easy access to the interstate at Exit 20 and the interstate highway system. The north lots intended for the development of a surface parking lot for fleet delivery vehicles that will service the facility. The site is located, excuse me, in the town's industrial district, which is designed to accommodate a range of manufacturing, warehousing, and office uses in areas that are served by arterial or collector streets and warehousing is an allowed use in that district. We understand that Business Park Drive is still technically a private way, as the select board has not formally accepted the road. But we also understand that the road is presently maintained by the town and is essentially managed as if it were a public street. The intersection with Sanborn Road and Business Park Drive is DOT regulated. That is a state highway. And so we have scoped a traffic impact review with the District III representatives of the Department of Transportation. Town officials were present during what was a virtual meeting. We identified intersections to study. We conducted counts at those intersections, prepared a report, and recently submitted that report to the state, and the town has that as well. And it was also in our submission for this evening's meeting. It's a pretty significant binder, and so you'd know it if you had it because it's heavy. We have not received any comments back from DOT on that submission at this point, but they have acknowledged its receipt. Also, as part of our due diligence, we asked Langdon Engineering to put together some conceptual layouts early in the process. And we asked GOV Environmental to assess the site for jurisdictional wetlands and habitat impacts and so forth. And as to the project areas, Langdon concluded that the slopes and grades of the site, which are significant, would require some retaining walls to support the driveways and parking areas. And because of the layout of the property, they identified that some of the building and some of the parking areas would impact two small, low-functioning wetland fingers that come up from the south into the areas where the building is proposed. And therefore, it would impact not only those wetland areas, but the municipal buffers that surround them. So we needed to seek variances for the placement of the retaining walls and the impact to the wetlands and buffers. And we filed those variance applications with the zoning board. And we presented them here in this room on February 18, 2025, and we were granted those variances as were applied for. And so tonight, what we have in front of you is a site plan application that relies upon the relief that was requested and received from the zoning board. Those retaining walls, for example, or portions of them are shown in the setbacks. But I want to assure you that they're there because we received permission by way of a variance. Otherwise, we think the site plan is conforming, and we look forward to your feedback tonight or another night. We understand this is a large application. In terms of other permits that will be necessary in addition to site plan approval, I'll just review a few of them for you so you can see the whole picture and project coming together. We, of course, will need permission from the state to impact the wetland areas that extend into the property. They're two little fingers, and we'll show them to you this evening on some of the boards that we've got. The good news is that the impact to those wetland areas is minor. It's 7,185 square feet, which is considered by DES to be a relatively small or modest amount of wetland impact. Actually, an amount that does not require the applicant to do offsetting restoration or mitigation or, or pay a management fee. So, so good news there. And we actually visited the Tilton Conservation Commission about some of these matters on January 20, 2025. And before, we had gone to the zoning board to make sure that we had properly understood the municipal ordinance on wetland buffers and that we were asking for the relief that we needed appropriately. They helped us understand what to ask for and supported the relief that we were requesting. And that was all in front of the zoning board when we arrived there in February. We have not been back to the Conservation Commission since that January meeting. And not since, certainly, we've supplied the site plan that's before you this evening. But we do have a wetlands application that will be filed with the state to impact those small wetland fingers. And the Conservation Commission will be notified of that application. They absolutely have the right to review it and comment on it. And if they wish to have us come in and explain either that application or the site plan, we're more than happy to do so. In addition, we will need to file a typical alteration of terrain permit application, or what's called AOT by the New Hampshire DES. That deals with site drainage and drainage management issues for our drainage systems as engineered by Langdon. We also will likely need to approach the Tilton Board of Selectmen to discuss the intersection at Business Park Drive and Sanborn Road. You'll see in our traffic study, or whenever you have a chance to unwind that, that we are proposing some very modest, but nonetheless widening at that intersection to accommodate some truck turning movements. And we'll want the Board of Selectmen to understand what we're proposing. And to the extent, excuse me, that we're in a town right-of-way, authorize that widening work. It would be premature to go there at this moment because we don't know how you'll review and potentially approve the site plan. But we certainly understand that that's on our list of things to deal with at the appropriate time.
May I ask a question at this time?
Go ahead. Yep.
Ari, is it in the town right-of-way or is it in the DOT right-of-way?
I think it's both.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's why I think a trip to the select board may be necessary.
I, it was brought up the other night at the select board. And it was brought up as the, in the New Hampshire DOT right-of-way, not in the town's right-of-way, so.
Thank you. And we'll clarify that, and we won't bother them if we don't need to. But I do, it's certainly in the DOT right-of-way. Whether it's also town or not, I think we will need to determine. But I think that the way they swing in, it's probably both. I'm getting some nodding behind me. I think it's both. Couple of other things to, to discuss. We will need to merge lots 1-2 through 1-5 into a singular project site if we are able to proceed with this project. It doesn't make a lot of sense to merge lots until you know you have something to do with them. And certainly, the landowner, the seller, the trust is aware. And so our plan would be to merge these lots upon receipt of a site plan approval and a closing with our seller. We would then, of course, need building permits to break ground, but we would be able to close with a merged lot and with a site plan approval. One of the things I didn't mention was that when we filed the application, of course, it was distributed to some of the town's departments, one being the fire department. And the deputy fire chief did reach out. He had some comments and questions. We made some revisions based upon his comments and sent him a revision sheet. And I think that met with his approval, and he sent it back to staff indicating that he had completed his review and was recommending approval with, with the changes that he had asked for. So that should be in your file somewhere, and I can provide more information when, when and if you'd like it.
Just to let you know that the fire district is not a part of the town. It's its own village district and because it's neither owned by Tilton or Northfield.
Okay. Well, if he needs to respond to something, it's nice to know that he will know what's there.
And I just found his report, so.
Okay.
Safe reports in here.
Yeah, I just, I haven't gotten through everything, sorry.
Nope, no issue. It's a lot. So, you know, having said all of that, I, I say it all by introduction to make sure that you're familiar with the site, with the program, with the project, with the team. I did want to ask Dave from Langdon to step forward and just go through some of the site-specific details for you. I don't think it would be, I know this is a preliminary discussion, but I don't think it would be wasting your time to be more familiar with what we're proposing. So if you'll indulge us in a little more of your time, we'd ask him to come forward.
That's.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you, Ari. For the record, my name is David Gagnon. I'm a civil engineer with Langdon Engineering here representing the applicant SBA Properties LLC. And briefly, I want to go over the existing conditions of the site, and then I'll get into our proposed improvements. Excuse me. What you see on the easel in front of you is an aerial of the site. I'll just briefly go over these conditions. The project consists of five lots totaling just over 10 acres. Each lot is roughly two acres. There's one lot north of Business Park Drive. That's lot 11. And there's four lots south of Business Park Drive, lots 2 through 5. And you could see those highlighted in cyan in the, in the plan in front of you. The lots are located on Business Park Drive, as we mentioned, is a, a private drive that's maintained by the town. And this has access to Sanborn Road to the west, which is a state road. All the, all the lots are primarily wooded, with the exception of the northern lot. The, it's about 135 feet on the northern section of the northern lot that has some power lines running through it. So there's an easement through that part of the site, which we're not touching. One thing to note on the southern lots is there's two wetland fingers that extend into the lot. One on the west side, one on the east side. These all drain to the south to a larger wetland feature south of the property. As far as the topography of the site, all the grades drain from north to south. And those wetland fingers that you see, they're really more of like a swale or a landform that's draining kind of the area south into the wetland, south of our site. And just to give you an idea of the surroundings of the property, we are located in the IN industrial zone. Just at the east of our site are industrial properties, so the Eversource Yard is north, or east of the north lot. And Sea Light USA, which I think is SPX now, is just the east of our four lots, south of Business Park Drive. And if you continue further down the road, you're going to run into the Spinnaker Contractor Manufacturing Facility. As I mentioned, south and west of our lots, of the south lots are just wooded area and a wetland feature. Sanborn Road to the west, and as I mentioned, power lines on the north side of the, the north lot. And now I'll get into our proposed improvements. If there's any questions on that first aerial, I'm happy to respond to them before we move on.
Sure.
Yep.
Those fingers of the wetland drainage, where does it go from there?
So they go south. So there's a, if you look on the, the bottom of that aerial, there's a yellow line with some triangles on it. That's the delineation of the wetlands. So you see some two fingers extending north. And then they go to this larger bog to the south. So that's where they drain to.
Where do they drain from the bog?
I believe they keep going south, but we have our, our wetland consultant to confirm that.
Good evening. Brendan Quigley. I'm a certified wetland scientist with GOV Environmental. As mentioned, I did the work on the property and been supporting the application since. So those, those two fingers, they drain to this large wetland that's behind the Traeger outlets. And I don't know the name. I don't know if it has a name, but they, they drain east behind that, the outlets there and into a series of wetlands and, and streams that kind of go through the development there. I don't know if it even has a name. It's kind, sometimes kind of hard to tell when, when things have reached these developed areas. There's, you know, they go through a number of culverts and such. The main receiving water is that large well in behind the Traeger outlets.
What my concern is, we've, in, in the past, maybe 10 years, we've had three 100-year storms. And what my concern is if that, for the wetland to be draining to the, so that it doesn't flood. And I don't know what the, what the angle of deflection of, of the drainage there is, but I know it drains down somewhere. Eventually goes into the Winnebago River. We're very concerned about polluting the Winnebago River. But it, it would be more advantageous to me if you would tell us where it drains from that bog all the way down to some area where it goes into the, eventually goes into the Winnebago River.
I could certainly have that information for you. As has been mentioned, there'll be follow-up discussions here. And I'm sure Dave can probably elaborate on some of the, the stormwater management, or will elaborate on the stormwater management that addresses those, those issues on the site.
Okay.
The proposed work is.
Thank you.
Being done.
Before we go any further, I've heard twice mentioned that Business Park Drive is private and the town maintains it. It is not private. The town took that road back. It is not private. The town took that road back in 2000, I think, too. We don't maintain private roads.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Thank you for that piece of information.
And another question. The bottom card that you have on the floor now under the easel. Are you showing the four lots on the north side of Business Park Drive and the one lot on the south?
No, the the lots that we're focused on are the lots highlighted in cyan, so they're kind of the bluish color. And there's, as long as the aerial is not upside down, there's one kind of on the northeast side and there's four south of Business Park Drive.
I can see your bluish now on the bottom. I was just confused because it does have the light green printing about.
Hard to see.
I just wanted to make sure what I was looking at.
Yep.
Thank you.
I could, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
Any further questions? Move on. Okay. And what you're seeing on the the easel right now, this is a rendering of our site plan. And what we're proposing is just under a 53,000 distribution facility. And that's shown central to the map on one of the southern four lots. It's the white rectangle. Employee parking will be located just east of the building. This is where these will be employees, either van drivers or employees that'll be working in the in the warehouse itself. The van lot is located north of Business Park Drive. Basically vans will be parked here overnight and then picked up by employees in the morning. And these employees will be parking, I guess, just east of the building. And there is sidewalks and a crosswalk that connect these two areas. On the west side of the building, you're looking at truck loading. So this would be tractor trailers and box trucks that will be basically inbound deliveries to the facility. These will operate only at night. So you get your trucks, your inbound deliveries delivered at night. They'll load up the warehouse and then during the day they'll be shipped out to vans. They'll be delivered to individual homes. Just south of the building, there is a canopy and this is basically for van loading. So I believe there's 12 spots for basically van loading. And you'll notice there is a loop drive coming in on the east side of the site. So this will be for vans. They'll enter on the east side of the site. It's one way, circulate to the south side of the building, get their vans loaded and exit west of on the west side of the site and off to Sandborne. And Ari did mention, we did receive relief for our retaining walls in some of the setbacks. And as I mentioned, there is some topography on site. So there's a retaining wall on the on the northern lot. This is a cut wall. This will be located within the setback. We received relief from the zoning board of adjustments to do that. On the the south four lots, there are two retaining walls. One of them will be in the setback. It's where you have that little kind of triangle that enters the site. So we are within that setback. And these are both two fill walls as these kind of grade down to the south. As far as pedestrian connectivity, we do have sidewalks throughout our site and throughout the van lot. We are proposing a crosswalk that connect the van lot to essentially the employee lot in the building. As far as lighting, there is, might be hard to see, but we did submit a photometric plan and a detailed lighting plan. We're compliant with the town standards. We have downward facing LED fixtures. They are dark sky compliant. And we have a maximum fixture height of 15 feet high, which is compliant with the town ordinance. As far as landscaping, we did provide a robust landscaping plan. So we we selected only native species which are drought tolerant. Just in summary, we have 61 trees, 165 shrubs and numbers of different ornamental grasses throughout the site.
I'm just going to interrupt you for one moment. We have a late arriving member who was at another meeting. And we're going to make him a comfortable spot. Sorry about that interruption. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. And just the last thing I want to touch on was our stormwater approach. And from a stormwater perspective, we will be submitting a permit to the state, which is known as our alteration of terrain permit. So we'll be filing this within the next couple of weeks to be reviewed by the New Hampshire DES. And, you know, essentially the goal of our of our stormwater design was to maintain the existing hydrology of the site. So we analyzed up to the 100 year storm. And basically we're maintaining the runoff from the site that currently exists. So we do this through two infiltration systems. So there's two systems under the parking lot. One east of the building, one west of the building. These two systems are essentially open bottom chambers. And the soils out there are fairly sandy, so they're conducive of infiltration. And we also have three water quality units on site. The intent of these are really to filter out the different oils and grits before they enter our infiltration system for some additional kind of cleaning. And then the overflow would go to the wetland system to the south and the goal is to really not increase any flows, but to maintain the flows that the site is currently experiencing. And as far as our outlets, there are two outlets from the site, one at each wetland finger. And we will be providing outlet protection to kind of knock down the velocity to make sure it's entering the wetland safety and provide some some additional water quality. So that's my summary of our site plan application. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Sir. Sir.
Yes.
You have any plan in place for like a catastrophic failure, say of any of the piece of equipment that is lubricated, say you have a catastrophic engine failure transmission fail or something like that goes right into the drainage system. Do you have a plan in place that would mitigate that?
Well, we do have, you know, we have these oil water separators on site, these water quality units. So if there was some kind of issue where there's an oil leak or some kind of hydraulic fluid leak or something to that nature, they would be picked up by one of these three different systems before they enter either infiltration system or beyond.
Well, what I'm not talking about regular runoff or anything like that. I'm talking about, say, for an example, some some hydraulic operated vehicles have at least 40 gallons of oil. And from from what I understand, I've been in, I've been in the construction business for 22 years. And I've been in the distribution business for 10 years. And I've been on the road for a number of times. So I know what's end of the both ends of the spectrum, so to speak. And I've seen engine failures where you've had to have somebody like Clean Harbers come in and take care of this. But I would really like to see a project like that in place, you know, a a plan, just a plan. That's all I mean.
Yeah, 100%. Accidents happen. Everything you said is right. So the DES, when reviewing the alteration of terrain permit application, they will require an operations and maintenance manual that speaks to those types of spill events. Additionally, our insurance carriers and our plant managers will have plans in place to address those things. Obviously, it's about training and knowing what they say and making sure that you have the supplies on site to be quickly responsive, not just know what to do and have have the means to do anything about it. So everything you've said is correct and it is part of the program and operations plan to address those items.
I sincerely hope so.
Yes. Good point. Thank you. I think I think Dave, I mean, we certainly can take as many questions as you want. We really just were looking to get an overview tonight so that you could be better prepared for further discussion.
Mr. Pollack, if you don't mind.
Not at all, of course.
I have the Tilton Northfield inspection, fire department inspection report.
Yes.
And the comments that says plans are approved with the changes submitted via David Gannon. PDF on these changes are attached to the report. Is that what, is that true?
Yes, this is Dave Gannon behind me.
Right.
And he and everything you've said is right. And our plan, so what you got back from the fire department, you the Northfield Tilton Department was their recommendations to address fire safety and make changes to the site plan.
So they have, those changes have been made to the site.
The changes will be made with the next submission, but we have agreed to those changes.
We've reviewed them. They're not in this, they're not in the site plan.
They're not because this was what went to them and then their changes came after.
I understand.
But I can assure you, we've approved them and accepted them.
I'm just curious, all the water from the roof, is that going into that water filtration system?
Yes, it's all part of the onsite drainage system.
Any estimation on a one inch storm, how much water that's going to be?
So the other lot, the the very large book next to the traffic one is our stormwater modeling report. It's about 300 pages long. Maybe Dave is able to answer it, but it's a very detailed question you're asking. I wish it were easy enough to just give you an answer, but it's a 300 page report.
I think poor Pat's going to go get the report.
But I won't even know what page.
I was just curious, that's all. Just for discussion. And maybe because we do have a selectman's representative here with the, they need to get permission to cross a town road with a crosswalk.
Right. Anything that goes on the road, including signage, will have to go to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, we're certainly prepared to do that. We we wanted to make sure that we knew what we were asking for permission to do before we, you know, in other words, offsite improvements are reviewed by the board. They would become part of your site plan approval. Crosswalks can move. They can be widened. They can be narrowed. We want to make sure we know what we're asking for and that requires your input.
That looks here all insomnia.
I tried to warn you.
No offense to whoever wrote it, by the way.
Yeah.
But.
We left that guy home.
He's writing his next one.
I was gonna say he's reading his verse.
It's tough stuff.
Yeah.
Yes, so I just had a follow up question on the the roof and the, you know, water disposal, I guess. So does everything from the roof run into a gutter system that then runs, you know, underground to a pipe that and then does that go into where the oil water separators are? Or does that just go straight to where the cisterns are underground to do the disposal? Or is that piped somewhere else and then, you know, just running out of a hill somewhere?
No, not uphill. Good, good question. It all is part of this detention, retention and treatment system so that it is one, captured, two, treated, and then three, released at a metered rate so that the water features that are, in this case, to the south are receiving that volume of water at a measured rate that it can handle. The whole idea behind the drainage report is to manage storm events so that you don't have a flood.
Okay, so all the permeable surfaces essentially funnel the water on site into this main system.
Impermeable, yes.
Yeah, sorry.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We need to have our engineer look at this.
Say what?
Oh, yeah.
I'm not a wetland scientist. Lighting specialist. Greening specialist.
Lot absorb.
I'd say it's probably worth waiting until they get their updated version with the fire district changes before we. I mean, having it reviewed would be, we'd have to wait until an actual application.
Because I imagine that they're not going to drop plans until an engineer gives them recommended. That's not like a roundhouse. That's just a circle, right?
What are you referring to?
This circle here, the 100 foot diameter truck turnaround. It's like a grid on it. So I just didn't know if it was like a round, like the trucks pull.
Oh, no, it's not a turntable.
All right. I don't know.
Yeah.
I've been kind of cool if it was.
Sorry, no. Insurance companies don't like those.
No, I know that, but I do.
Doesn't the municipal sewer run up to those lots?
It does, right?
Yeah, yes.
It's down the road there.
Down the road.
Yeah, and our intention is to hook in.
I didn't, I was trying to find it in your plans. Maybe I should be looking at those.
We could provide the fire, the updated site plan sheets at any time. They're they're not controversial and they're not holding anything back.
Yeah, probably at your next, you should include those.
But if the concern was that your peer reviewer have a complete set, we could do that tomorrow. So says me on Dave's behalf, but he hasn't grabbed me by the neck. I guess I'm okay.
He doesn't need to sleep, right?
Yeah, there you go. Not sleeping anyway. Who would the town typically use for peer review?
Yeah. Keats North.
Sure.
All right. Should we, anybody have any other comments from the board?
Yes.
Nate?
Are you guys putting in wells or are you planning to connect to the Tilton Northfield Water District?
It's all going to be public water. So there is a water main that runs down Business Park Drive, which we'll be tapping into.
Okay, great, thank you. And I guess just to note the water is not managed by Tilton. It's managed by the Tilton Northfield Water District, which is a separate municipal entity similar to the fire district.
Okay.
Yeah. Welcome to Tilton for that.
They send us a bill.
We don't own anything. We just have roads and.
It's a good way to do it.
We only have 11 miles of roads, too.
Can you tell me how many employees you've scheduled, you know, just off the top of your head, you don't have to exactly come in, but.
We do have that.
Other, I mean, you got parking spaces for 147.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a combination of the drivers and the people working inside the warehouse.
Right.
Yeah. So as far as drivers go, we have 80 drivers potentially. And then over the course of the entire day, there's 87 onsite employees.
So that's 80 drivers per 24 hours.
Correct.
Eighty drivers per shift. That's 80 drivers for for the whole 24.
Over the day, yep.
Okay.
And the vans are just operating during the day. It's going to be the trucks operating at night, kind of loading things.
Yeah. What are you using for for tractor trailers? 53 footers?
Yeah, WB 67 is the tech, so 53 footers, correct.
53s, yeah.
Yeah.
How many a day are coming in and out?
I believe it's 12, Chris. Correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, 12.
And that's and that's in the 24 hours cycle?
That's going to be, yeah, over the course of the day, but the trucks are going to be coming in at night. So those those
Okay.
53 footers, so that's for kind of bringing in the packages that's just at night.
Okay. Because, you know, I can unload a tractor trailer in seven minutes, so it doesn't take that long, you know.
Are you looking for work?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Are you looking for work?
Not at the price that they're willing to pay me. I have a national license, by the way.
It seems like you have quite a bit of experience.
I have eight and a half years in the distribution center.
Well, if you change your mind, let us know. I think the point Dave was making was that the larger trucks will bring the packages into the facility in the evening hours and then the smaller vans will take it away during the day. Okay.
Would there be the vans that go out and out into the world during the day, would they be coming back with packages and loading trucks to go? So or is it the truck comes in, drops off and off it goes?
More out than in, but both.
So will any of these like 53s could is be parked permanently like, are they, are they just coming and going back to the, back to another center?
Yeah, they're just coming and going. I think we have two parking spots, but that's really just temporary. So the idea is you're not going to have tractor trailers parked there. Just offload it and then they're going to.
Okay, yeah. So they offload them, then they load them up or outgoing? Or they, is that?
No, no, they're going to be empty. Yeah. So, you know, outgoing is all the vans, ingoing is all the tractor trailers.
Well, when you, when you send a van out, they don't pick up at the same time? No, okay.
Anyone else on the board?
In your. Stormwater maintenance bible. I don't see in the index or table of contents, a. Management for the swales, a maintenance schedule, maybe is a better way to put it. In other words, who's gonna maintain them and keep the, clean the debris and whatnot that gets into them and? What is that schedule?
Yes, I know that that is a requirement for the state alteration of terrain permit, which is sent to the town as well. So if you don't have that at the moment, you'll be getting it as soon as we file that application, which I think we're about a week or two out from.
Well, that's for the dredging still, right?
No, it's the stormwater management, yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Anything else before the board? Do we?
Eric. I guess related to the, the trucking, you do have the two parking spots, you said, like what happens if you have? Drivers like reaching their, their daily hour limit or mileage limit, you know, when they, they arrive at your facility, I guess.
Yeah, it's incumbent on the facility to manage driver time. I mean, obviously, we can't let someone out who's on the verge of a violation. So that's one of the reasons that the trucks would be putting time out until another driver can be located.
Okay, thank you.
As yet, that's not in our purview. I don't have to open this to the public right now. We'll do that next time. All right.
You could ask the public if they have any comments, it could ask a question.
Yeah, is there any questions from the public?
Are you taking online comments?
I am taking online comments.
Yeah, this is Chuck Mitchell on the Conservation Commission. I know there was a question earlier about the drainage. And the wetlands. Drainage from this site does go south toward the Tanger Outlet Mall. If you'll notice, if you've ever been in there, on the north side of the Tanger Outlet Mall, if you were to drive around the back. There has been a series of, believe it or not. Planks that were driven down in the ground to kind of hold the wetlands back. But there's also a significant number of underground drainage systems throughout the Tanger Mall. And those are directed toward Route three and eleven. Those are collected and diverted under the highway, under Samborn Road. And exit over behind or in the area near Walgreens. And that water then runs down into the Winnebago River, but that system is all in place now. And if this site is not gonna be generating more wet water off their site now than what is currently there, which is what we have been promised. Then that is how that water system does drain off, just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Didn't we have flooding, that's Gulf Brook, isn't it?
No. Gulf Brook is, where's it go? It is Gulf Brook there between. Behind, behind Walgreens, right?
Isn't that Gulf Brook?
Is it?
I was thinking about the other one, that's up by Home Depot, that goes into a gully there.
No, I'm pretty sure that's Gulf Brook.
I think you're.
But we, we, didn't we experience, didn't that flood during the last hundred year storm event? That's the one we had, we had the fifty, the hundred, that flooded there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I was just seeing if my mind was working correctly.
Yeah, it did.
Hunt Brook.
Hunt Brook.
Hunt Brook.
Hunt Brook.
The one that goes underneath behind Walgreens. Under, and then between Shell Station and Applebee's, that's according Google Maps, that's Hunt Brook. I know where you're talking about, I think Gulf Brook. No.
No, that's, it's, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from the? Public? All right, we'll bring it back to the board. I guess we have to make a. Do we continue it to March, March, April? Twenty second?
Twenty second.
I just looked it up. Cause I know where I'll be on the eighteenth. Be right here reading those reports.
I'll make a motion to continue it to March twenty second.
About April.
April twenty second, sorry, that's my bad.
After the east, I do everything that Sarah tells me to.
Yes, sir.
If it's your intention to engage a peer review group for some of the engineering issues. Should we bump it out a full month to give that process some time for you to have input so that we can make our return more productive?
Sure.
And maybe May thirteen would be your next meeting?
Very superstitious, but that's okay. Sure, do you want to revise your motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to remove my first motion, I'll make a motion to.
Continue?
Continue, from what, what's the date?
May, uh, May thirteenth.
May thirteenth. Luckily, that's not a Friday.
No, it's Tuesday. And we'll still have a meeting on the twenty second, engage any of you wanna come back.
Is that satisfied?
It is, thanks, and in the interim, of course, we'll be working with town staff to set up Keach Nordstrom as a peer review group. Send them all the information.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We'll see you on May thirteenth.
Thanks very much for your time tonight.
Maybe it'll be spring by then.
Maybe.
Shall we make a motion to?
Maybe.
Hire Keach Nordstrom to?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion.
We need to make the motion.
To hire them.
There's, there's no one else that would, that town uses for that scope of this.
Anybody can use anyone they want, but Keach Nordstrom is typically who we've used.
Correct.
And I think they've served us very well.
Very well, yep.
Okay.
Great relationship.
Unless you have a reason to.
Hire Keach Nord.
Motion to hire Keach Nordstrom.
For this project?
For this project. To review this project.
Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Holy cow. Thank you. Night, gentlemen. Thanks for all the. All right, what do we got next? That case, we continued?
No one asked, no one asked.
Uh, let's see, next is. Approval of minutes from March twenty fifth. Think those were sent to us.
Yeah, they were sent, sent on the second, they weren't sent with the original, they were on the.
Yeah, I got it, that's February. All right. Everybody have a chance to review.
Does the town provide file cabinet for these major projects?
Holy cow.
Ever been down in the basement in the storage room?
I don't go in the basement.
Frightening, isn't it?
I have, yes. That jail cell.
I don't.
My food through a hose.
When I was a selectman, I went down there and it broke my ankle.
What? Any of those on all of those?
Holy cow, there's a lot of stuff there.
He's gonna give us new ones, so.
Catherine, just for your edification. The state of New Hampshire. Has joined the rest of the United States in an act that is called the UETA. And it's for e-signing requirements, and they will accept these signatures, the state will.
I don't.
Well, I'm just telling you the state will.
I'm just saying.
That it wasn't legal, and it is.
I didn't say it wasn't legal, I'm just saying, when you're site planning somebody else's property, I personally.
But he owns, Casey Nicholson owns it, guy, guy is his son.
I would like a little more than electronic signature on a piece of paper to tell me that the owner is saying, yes, I planned my property. And I'm not present, I mean, all it would take is Pat to call up. Casey or.
How do you know the other end of the person, the other end of the phone? How, how do you know the other end, the person on the other end of the phone is the actual person that you're getting?
You don't.
I call him up, I know Casey.
I don't, I wouldn't know his voice from anyone.
My point is, it's, it's, he even, the attorney even offered to give us something a little more substantial.
Well, don't, don't we have a form for that?
What?
Don't we have a?
It's on there.
I don't believe you'll see anywhere in our requirements, specific requirement for that, we should have. But we don't, I don't believe, I've not seen it. So, I mean, it comes to us in all different styles, we've, we've got them notarized, we haven't, I'm just saying.
Well, I mean.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes of March twenty fifth?
Here we go.
February, but I know I read them online, so.
I read them when they first came out, but that was two weeks ago, I think.
Nice job on those minutes, it couldn't have been fun.
No. They were kind of lengthy.
Make a motion except for the minutes?
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, two seconds, second by Mr. Damon. We'll get him in the record today. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, motion passes. I wasn't belaboring your point about the signature, I just was trying to keep on my task focused.
Did we have a conversation about backland lot? Is it still hanging? And it's gonna come back to us?
I wasn't personally prepared for that, but. Does anybody have?
A little bit of background on that.
I have a lot to say about it.
So, we had a, he's just looking for a little background on it.
Oh, well, we had a, somebody came in for a.
Was it a lot merger? No, it was creating a second lot.
Subdivision.
To, they wanted to subdivide a lot off those of the property, and the question came up. Well, maybe it wasn't a question, but the applicant's representatives felt it was a backland lot. And it's, so the question came up for us in the town, what is a backland lot? If you look at the tax cards, backland lots do not have road frontage. This piece of property has fifty, fifty feet of road frontage, I believe. Fifty feet of road frontage, which means it's not a backland lot.
Right, well, that's, that's the existing lot, correct? Cause there's the, the main lot, cause it, it looks like when. They created the two lots at one point, they left that like sixty foot width on the road, running all the way back.
That's right.
Yeah, there's a road, existing road there that.
And, and so I would think if they're creating a new lot off of that lot that is connected to the street. That new lot would not have any road frontage, and that new lot would be. A backlot.
No, it has road frontage to the road that goes to the.
It has a right of way, doesn't it?
Well, it, it, right, it, it has a right of way on a private, the exist, the two existing properties. One owns that driveway all the way to the road, right? And then if you were to create a second lot that is only on that, that driveway. You know, between the road lot and the lot that currently exists, that road would only have, wouldn't have frontage on a public road.
Yes, it does, it would have to have access, it would have to have access to that driveway, which has access to the.
Right, right, so.
Main road, I mean, think about, think about what's a suggestion, suggesting every subdivision that came in. That would be true of every lot they tried to create, if they're not going to share the entryway.
We have the one on Range Road where he created what, five lots?
Five lots, on a class six road.
We have, we have.
Those were not backland lots.
The Duninsky property on Caleb Hill.
It's a driveway.
Had access to Caleb Hill. Correct.
Correct. And that.
Has no access.
It's a landlocked lot.
It's landlocked, thank you, I was looking for that, it's landlocked.
Even though there's a right of way through it, right of way is not a roadway.
Not necessarily, no.
No, it's not.
But if it's landlocked. Off of the road, is that not a backlot then?
Yes.
But it's not, it's not landlocked.
Yes, it is.
So, the question, the question here.
Run trucks down through it.
The question here for us is, what is a backland lot? I happen to own one, and it's taxed as a backland lot. They're considered not buildable. And right now, there's no, there is no easement or right of way to get to it, I mean, I can get to it because I drive over my own property. There's another backland lot that I know of off of River Road in Lockmere. It has no easement, maybe by now it does, but I know a few years back it didn't, and it's a pretty sizable one. It is landlocked, other people own land around it, there is no access to the road, those are backland lots. The reason they were trying to claim this is a backland lot, because in our ordinance. Dimensional values, and I don't have them in front of me, I'm sorry. Without sewer and water, you needed.
Hundred feet, I think.
Yeah, more footage than they had.
Two hundred feet of frontage.
Thank you. So they, that's why they were trying to make it a backland lot, but it's just simply not, they would just have to go to the zoning board for variance.
Well, I guess. The, the current lot we're talking about doesn't exist.
It doesn't exist, they were trying to make it.
They want to make.
They, they, they want to make a lot, and if the lot. The new lot itself isn't on, you know, bordering the road at all, doesn't that make it a backland lot?
No, but it borders the road that goes out to, all the way out.
It's a driveway.
It, that's, that's a private driveway.
Private driveway.
The new lot would need a right of way easement to get to the road.
And that would be part of the subdivision process we'd be asked to make, that we would have to be certain. That that new lot they create does have right of way through that access.
So then they, so they, they theoretically, they could create a lot and put a, 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 a structure on it. With an easement in place to use that, that driveway, is that then not a backland lot? Cause it's not on a, it's not on a public road.
Well, no, because we as the planning board should never create backland lots. So in the subdivision process, we should not say, yes, you can make that lot without an easement to the road.
But it changes all the requirements by.
So the property owner comes in, he owns the whole lot, the property owner is creating a new. The property owner is creating a new lot, so he's the owner of both, right? And he's going to give right of way to that, or at least if we're gonna approve it, we're to make sure it has right of way.
Yeah, I, I thought that that was the intention of having backland lots in our regulations is for people to be able to utilize property that is not on, you know, whatever amount of, of road frontage, you know.
Unfortunately, that didn't take place through our zoning. If you look at subdivision, so let's take my lot for example, it's gotta be I don't know, thousand, let's just say it's twelve hundred, fifteen hundred feet from the road. Then according to our subdivision, I would have to build a right of way or a driveway to town's road specifications.
If you wanted to live there.
If I wanted to develop that lot.
Right.
Well, that's a pretty expensive thing to do.
Pretty expensive thing to do. Even if you have a right of way, it's not, it's not made for trucks and telephone, telephone guys and all those other guys.
And they, the, the reason for that was, you know, for ambulance, fire truck to get out there for an emergency situation.
Right. But isn't that under the purview of the Tilton Northfield Water District similar to how they made? Cause they're the ones who dictate like road passability requirements and stuff.
No.
They, they.
The fire department does, but when we when we approved that new subdivision, well, it was, it's new to me, the new subdivision regulations, that was part of the regulations, the driveways, I think over four hundred feet had to be to town road specifications for safety reasons.
I guess how?
And I can tell you, it was a town of Wilton they adopted because they forgot to change the work, the town of Wilton to the town of Tilton when they gave it to us. True story.
So then how do, like, how does anyone build on a class five or a class six road then? Cause.
Because it's a town owned road that we no longer maintain. And you would have to go to the Board of Selectmen to get permission to build on a class six road that we no longer maintain. Some sections of them we do maintain, but some we don't. And we do have people that have built on class six roads that we don't maintain.
Cause I, cause I know there was a case where the fire district had to was involved in terms of like creating three lots or, or something for, for housing.
Oh, you're talking up at the end of Pest House.
But in like the agricultural district.
Yeah, out at the end of Pest House.
There's five houses down.
I think there is now.
Yeah.
Five houses down there.
I think there is.
It's not serviced by the town of Tilton.
Well, there's five lots, but there's not five houses yet.
Yeah. It's not serviced by the town. The emergency services come from Franklin. That's true.
Mutually.
Because a class six road is subject to bars and gates.
Hmm, sometimes, not, not always. Not always.
They have to have the public access, but that doesn't mean they could commit with a bulldozer. It's public access. But it's not, it's an unimproved road. That's what it is. You can build a house on it, but you know ahead of time, it's a class six road, you're on your own.
They've signed a waiver.
They signed a waiver.
Okay.
With the Board of Selectmen.
With the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, I, I guess then like.
So they maintain it and.
Yes.
They maintain it themselves.
That's correct.
They just had a bunch of gravel shipped in, trucked in.
I did find information, excuse me, not a lot on the website. I thought I sent it out to the planning board.
You did. You sent something, you sent something out.
About backland lots that I found.
A Google thing, yeah.
Yeah. It wasn't a lot.
What is technically the difference between like a, a private road and a, and a driveway?
Not much. I don't mean to be facetious.
It's a private road.
It's like a, you know, a, a class six road could be, you know, worse than.
Class six road is owned by the town. A skidder road is owned by the landowner. Well, I mean, just enough for a skidder to get through or, or a logging truck or something like that. It can, it doesn't, it doesn't have any dimensions to it.
So a private road could have been created pre-zoning where, you know, people bought lots together and built out there and built a common driveway, if you will, but it's a private road. We have some private roads over off of Mandville in that subdivision.
Private road.
Right. She created a.
Then I guess.
They're, they're.
It's no longer a backland lot if you create a private road then. You're, so you're, you're, you're creating the frontage that, that didn't previously exist in order to satisfy.
Right, I could take my backland lot and build a road out there. It would be privately owned. Not gonna do it, but I could. Maybe if I had a bulldozer.
You could, yeah.
But anyway, review.
With the new zoning laws, I'll be able to do that in my backyard.
Review that backland lot stuff because it, it is going to come back.
I, I'm gonna mention that. All of you should review some of the changes that are being proposed at the State House. Some have already passed the Senate and are going to the House. Some have passed the House and are going to the Senate. But if they go through, it will take a lot of our autonomy away from us as a town. The state will dictate what our zoning is, what size lots we have. And so we look into them because there's some pretty serious things being done. And get in touch with your representative or your senator.
So like towns that have minimum building standards for a lot, those, they could say nay-nay.
That's right.
Yeah, this, like the state's gonna set a.
An acre lot and saying half acre. I mean, and it's, it's amazing to see the changes that they're, they are writing into law.
Well, a small town like Tilton, the economic impact on us is gonna be dramatic. The services that are gonna be required for all those buildings, those homes.
You can't, you can't build in seven thousand square foot lots and have private septic systems. It just doesn't work. Somebody's gonna.
You can have, have shared system.
Property pretty quick.
You can have a shared system. That's what you have in cluster housing.
Yeah.
But I, I think that's that's the whole thing is like the minimum lot size, you know, if, is the size of a lot's almost irrelevant when it comes to water and sewer because like, you could have ten acres and not be able to put septic in a well on it.
No, no, no.
And I mean, like.
How many septic systems have you done?
None.
I've done a few. You can do it anywhere. Do it anywhere. My well is down two hundred and twelve feet. I found water down two hundred and twelve feet.
You can do anything with enough money.
All right, we're going. Doesn't matter. Yes, ma'am.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second, non-debatable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. See you in two weeks.